It's in sync.
Yeah, it's dead on today.
No, only in time.
That's a good sign.
As time goes on.
Good evening. I'd like to call this October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen meeting in Middletown City Council to order. If you please stand and join me in a moment of meditation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I'm in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Ms. Gink, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston, here. Mr. Bohannon?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Picard?
Here.
Mayor Mulligan?
Here. All right, I've received one comment card this evening. I'd like to invite Ms. Rosaline Lindsay down to the podium. Good evening. If we could get your name and address to the record, please.
Yes, my name is Rosaline Lindsay. My address is forty-eight twenty-five Hickory Hollow. I have been a resident of Middletown for sixty-nine years. I want to know, the Middletown minute printed with taxpayers' dollars, if so, how do you justify endorsing a candidate? And two other candidates are running for the same office. I find it disturbing that you can use that space to endorse a candidate, but not use the space to inform the communities about the income tax recycling program. So I'm very disturbed, and I would like to know if the Middletown minutes is printed with taxpayers' dollars. If so, does your charter allow you to endorse a candidate and to let other communities know that you're endorsing one candidate when you have two other candidates running for the same office?
Okay. Well, we're not set up, Ms. Lindsay, for discussion here this evening, but the city manager can follow up. He did some research on that and has an email he shared with council, and he can probably get that to you and follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I would appreciate it better if you had everybody that was running for the office, maybe it wouldn't hurt so bad. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down this evening. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our city manager reports. Mr. Atkins?
Good evening, Mayor and city council. We're going to start tonight with the rest of the two thousand eighteen budget. We covered public safety in the last go-around, and this is going to be the rest of the budget tonight, at least. Significant changes for two thousand eighteen. We do have a two percent cost of living increase for all employees. This has been previously incorporated into our collective bargaining agreements. It's consistent with everything we've talked about in the past. There will be no performance-based incentive program for two thousand seventeen. It's already been incorporated into that two percent for the cost of living. Income tax revenue is projected to increase three percent over the two thousand seventeen budget, but actually three percent less than what we anticipate the year-end to be for two thousand seventeen. What that means honestly is that we expect NTE in the schools to start slowing down and finishing up their construction. And so you will start to see some of those revenues back off. We expect a small increase over the budget. But overall, revenues are going to start leveling out. The Kettering's construction, again, will add some, depry some of that. But we're trying to be very conservative in what we're putting together so that it's realistic. We're not going pie in the sky when we know that's not going to happen. Health insurance costs are increased six percent. We are also incorporating a payback of the prior-year deficits. We are hoping to be able to return five hundred thousand dollars of the deficit from prior years through the two thousand eighteen budget process. We will still have more to pay back, but we're trying to do it in a responsible way that keeps our health insurance going, but also lives within our means. We're also going to deappropriate five hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred dollars in the two thousand seventeen budget so that we can get all the projects that we want to do in eighteen done and still maintain a fifteen percent general fund balance in two thousand eighteen. Go ahead, please. Oh, thank you. Year-end expected balance for the general fund is five million, three, which is eighteen point six percent. The two thousand eighteen budget will end at fifteen percent. You will see an increase in personnel costs of approximately four point nine percent, incorporating, again, the two percent cost of living steps and the increase in healthcare costs throughout the city. You will see no water rate increase for two thousand eighteen. There is incorporated into that another fifteen percent sewer rate increase for two thousand eighteen. That is consistent with our long-term control plan projections. Again, the idea is to make those increases now. I know they're not happy and they're not palatable, but to get those in place now and start building that capital fund so as the long-term control plan comes online, there's money available to move forward with all of those projects. There will be no solid waste increase for two thousand eighteen. Jake has been able to confirm through September that we have gotten seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in construction income tax through September thirtieth. That, again, is the schools, NTE, and the other projects that are underway. Obviously, some of that will continue through the end of the year, which is why we're trying to be fairly conservative when we look at two thousand eighteen to know that those are one-time expenses. Housing stock's been listed as a high priority for council. We are continuing to start that. We've not begun the master plan process. That'll be through two thousand eighteen to develop new policies and neighborhood strategies. You'll probably see that in the two thousand nineteen budget. There are no new initiatives in the two thousand eighteen budget for neighborhoods or housing in this budget. The animal control officer is back in the budget since, I believe, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, for almost ten years. And we've been able to change things in the health department to allow them to be open through lunch and all day on Friday again. So there are some small increases in services that we're able to offer through the revenues that we have available. Go ahead, please. The next thing we're going to do is you're going to see two pay and benefits ordinances for two thousand eighteen. The first one's going to be the standard pay and benefits that we've always had. It's going to be exactly the same as every prior year that you've seen. However, we are making changes in the way we pay people, starting for people that are hired in January of two thousand eighteen. After you're hired in January, you're going to be on simply a different step. Our old system, which has been at least thirty years in the making, has step increases of four point seven percent. As I have been going through and we have looked and looked and looked, can't come up with why our step increases are four point seven percent. I cannot find anywhere in thirty years why we picked that arbitrary number and what it's based on. So we started looking at what we had to work with. There are not a lot of people out in the world getting four point seven percent raises every year. It's just not the world that we live in now. So we are, and the other piece of that is after seven years, you stop getting steps at the city. So you would get approximately twenty-eight percent increases over seven years. And then for the last twenty-three years that you're here, you don't get a raise if you work for the city. We are changing that around, and we are spreading that same amount of raises, those seven steps of four point seven. We're spreading those out over twenty years. So you'll be getting percent and a half, two percent a year. Again, there may be some pay in the performance base. There may be something else to go with that. But the actual steps are going to get down in the one and a half to two percent range over a twenty-year period so that even though you're getting less at the beginning, you stick around, you get all of the things that you would have gotten at the same time, but rather in a longer time. The other piece that we're trying to change is you used to get vacation, you used to get sick days, you used to get a personal day, you used to get a birthday, and you could bank an awful lot of that each year. Where if you were retiring, you may have a thousand hours of sick time. And you may have five weeks of vacation and your personal day and your birthday and all this stuff. And when you leave, you're getting a check from the city for tens of thousands of dollars. That's not going to be the way it's going to go in the future. We are going to meld the vacation, the personal day, the birthday, and sick leave, and all that together, and you're going to have a paid time off. And you can use that as you wish. If you're sick, that's fine. Take a day off. If you need vacation, take a day off. If your kids are sick and you need to take vacation, take a day off. Do what you need to do. But we're going to limit that to about the same time that you were allowed to have during the old system. Difference is where you could amass tons of money and bank it for when you retired, you're only allowed to bank four hundred hours in the new system. Which means if you are sick, if you have a catastrophic sickness, you have ten weeks of paid time off that theoretically, if you have a long, two-month illness, you have ten weeks of pay to protect you, if you use it, to get you through a long-end illness. If you get longer than that, frankly, you're looking at short-term or long-term disability anyway, probably. But what you're not going to do is you're not going to bank a thousand hours of sick time, five weeks of vacation, plus your birthday, plus your personal day, and at the end of this, walk out with a check in the tens of thousands of dollars. What this does, if we just have normal turnover, and we've looked at this over, we used the past five years and projected it forward for the next five years, is if we just have normal turnover in the city for people that retire, people that quit for various reasons, get sick and leave, whatever, the normal turnover that we have, if you project this out, by the time you get to year five, you're saving about a half a million dollars a year over the current payroll system. And so, again, trying to reset us to a way that over the, as we move into the future, we become more and more sustainable and continue to offer the services to the public that we're supposed to in a way that allows us, again, more, divert more money back to paving, recreation, to things that the community wants, and still have a viable workforce. And so, again, this is a plan we're going to put together that can, again, starting January first of two thousand eighteen. If you're hired by the city, you're on a different plan. So you're going to see two different pay and benefits ordinances. Go ahead, please. Want to give you an update on the employee health. It's been a concern all year. We've been talking about it. We are continuing to see some improvements. The medical claims for the third quarter of this year were up two hundred and eighty-eight thousand over our last year expenses. However, with the changes we made in prescription and dental and the other things that we have done, we actually ended the quarter three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars less in expenses than we did from two thousand sixteen, even with the increase in medical benefits. So we are trending in the right direction. We hope that we continue that process. Go ahead, please. If we continue just conservatively, we get back to stop loss that we are entitled to, we continue to just operate in the norm, we should end this year with a balance of nine thousand, six hundred dollars positive in the healthcare fund, which means we are back living within our means again. I told you, again, at the beginning of this presentation, that we are hoping in two thousand eighteen to be able to not only live within our means, but to pay you back a half a million dollars of the deficit that we had to borrow over the past two years to get us through. Go ahead, please. And again, we are standing right now at one point five million dollars in the hole. Again, we will end this year in the positive. We believe, well, we'll make it in the deposit. We'll do what we have to do. We hope to, again, start paying you back a half a million dollars. If there's some other things that come through with workman's comp or others, we'll improve on that. But, again, we're trying to be responsible, knowing that costs are going up, knowing that we still have to cover catastrophic things. We're trying to be as responsible as we can to keep costs in line, start reducing the deficit, get us back over a long-term period of time to where we're back living the way we should again. So that's where we are with healthcare. Good news, but we've got a long hole to dig out of, so we'll continue to work on it. Go ahead, please. The rest of the general fund is showing a five point four percent increase. I'll break that down for you department by department. Go ahead, please. City manager's office is showing an eight point four percent increase. I will continue to work with the new master city plan as a framework, also within the five-year plan that I presented to council a few years back as to getting us back to sustainable revenues for paving and doing the things we want to do. We will continue our response to the opiate epidemic. We will continue throughout eighteen to work on the housing policy considerations that presentation I brought to you back in May. We will spend as much time as we need to get it right. And then hopefully, in the nineteen budget, we'll have some new initiatives to bring forward based on what we come up with. The other piece of that is part of the master plan. When we're working on housing, we're working on zoning, we're working on the airport, all these other things we're working on. One of the last pieces we'll do, and I've got a hundred thousand dollars in my budget for this, is to start the transportation study. And this is, again, another long look at transportation, pedestrian, bicycle, automobile, and mass transit. How do we start moving people for the next ten to fifteen years based on the other pieces, based on the downtown master plan, based on the visiting piece, based on the other pieces that have come together? One of the last pieces will be, okay, if we're going to do this, how do we move people in a way that better achieves those goals? And so that'll be one of the last things that comes together. My guess is that'll be the last quarter of two thousand eighteen. We'll start looking at transportation after we've established. But that's, again, the increase in that budget is mostly eaten up by the transit study that will be happening late in two thousand eighteen. Go ahead, please. Finance is only going up one point six percent. Go ahead. They're doing several cool things next year. Number one, we are finally going to work on an online tax filing option for residents. This is already out of date. I've been working with Troy and Jake on getting the online option for our residents. When I lived in Mason, I could get online. They had the form filled out. They could import your stuff. You could go down the line and file in about ten minutes the city income tax. As long as there were no abnormalities that the software found, you were done for the year. We're working on getting that for Middletown residents. However, with the new tax software, they've already hit a glitch, and Troy and Jake tell me that while they're working on this, it'll probably be towards the end of eighteen and not the beginning of eighteen before this is ready for our residents. But we're working on it, and when we get it resolved and it's right, last thing I want to do is have people file taxes and go, "Our software is screwed up. Sorry. Things are not right." So let's get it right. We'll roll it out when it is, and we'll take it out. You've heard of the CAFR. We've always had the certified annual financial report that we've already put out. Many cities, and I came from Vandelia, have a, what's called a popular annual financial report. And what it is, it's a more simplified version for the public of your financial statements. Vandelia used to do theirs in the form of a calendar. And each month had a different department and what was going on that thing. It listed the city's income and expenses in a very easy-to-understand format. We are going to attempt that for the first time this year. It'll be a test for us, so it'll be, we'll see how it comes out. If we don't get it exactly the way we want this year, well, in nineteen, we'll do better, and we'll get it to where it's simple and easy and sent annually to all addresses that receive a water bill. We will continue to work on getting the government budget awards and the excellence in financial reporting awards. And we are continuing to work on ways to get our stale and deleted revenues accounts receivable collected through the state offices and income tax, things like that, so. Information systems is up four point eight percent. Our city telephone system is at the end of its useful life. We'll be looking at updating that telephone system. We'll be looking at upgrading wireless infrastructure at remote locations. Troy's working right now, especially on the fire stations. One of the things we've looked at is if the city building was down for any reason, natural disaster, whatever, headquarters is supposed to be for fire, our backup emergency place where we set up command. We don't have any Wi-Fi there because of the way, there's just no infrastructure there. Those are the types of things that Troy's working on. The fire stations, water, sewer plants, things like that, that will allow us to have the infrastructure in place in today's twenty-first century world to use the internet seamlessly and quickly. We'll be upgrading the public's work software, similar to what we did with police this year, and we have several servers that are getting to the end of their useful life. We'll be updating those as well. Law department's going to see probably the most changes of any department next year. They're up twenty-six point one percent. Some of that will be ongoing. Some of that is transition as law director Landon retires. Go ahead, please. Les will be retiring at the end of this year. He will be coming back part-time to help us with transition. We will add a staff attorney at the lowest level at the prosecutor's office. We are in the process, we have transferred all of the economic development money that was in the ED budget for outside counsel. We're consolidating that all into the law department, so, again, all the legal expenses are in one place, so you'll see that. We are also anticipating additional ED projects. The things we're getting involved in now with OPUS and some of those things are more and more complicated with TIFs and development agreements that are fairly complicated. The AK Steel deal required a lot of legal counsel when we did the Research and Innovation Center. We are getting more and more involved in those types of projects, and in anticipation, as we will need some outside counsel to make sure that we catch all the latest Ohio law updates when we put those agreements together. Then in HR, we've got Kay and Karen, who have been with us for forty years each. They have retired, come back part-time. They are nearing the end of their time that they've, they said, you know, at some point down the road, we literally want to actually retire and quit working. We brought on a couple of people early, and they'll be put on the entire budget for two thousand eighteen. But it's time to start taking that institutional knowledge of Karen and Kay and start training the new staff. And so we'll have new people here, and we'll have Kay and Karen, again, imparting their knowledge for two thousand eighteen so that down the road, we've got a fully integrated HR department. We've gotten off cheap for a lot of years. It's been great. It's worked well for the city. Kay and Karen is part-time. That's not sustainable. We know that, and so we're planning for the succession. And it's going to cost us some money during transition to get everybody in place, up to speed, so that Kay and Karen can get on and move forward. Economic development is up fifty percent in their budget. That's not quite as dramatic as it seems. Recreation was in the community revitalization budget as Shelby's come on in the communications position. She's going to take over a lot of those duties in handling the PR and a lot of that. So the recreation money, which is twenty-five thousand normal, plus we've got six thousand that we're not going to use this year, thirty-one thousand is going to transfer over from community revitalization over to economic development in the communications budget. We upgraded Carly to Shelby and added the extra experience of a communications coordinator. That's another thirty thousand. We will be moving the economic development department over to GETS as it's completed. Again, we've talked about that over different parts of time. And the property development fund was its own thing. We are now moving the property development fund that's part, that's one hundred and fifty thousand that would normally be spent in economic development, is being actually moved to the economic development budget. The property development budget that you have in your large book is now paying just the CRA agreements that we already have in place moving forward. Again, we're consolidating the law stuff in law, the economic development stuff in economic development so that like things are in similar places, so that's where that money is going up in there. Plus, of course, step increases and the two percent raise in health insurance and things like that. Go ahead, please. Airport master plan is under construction. They're up five point six percent. We'll be working on that in two thousand eighteen. We're also working, talking to Butler Tech and Cincinnati State about opportunities for education out there with the avionics program at Cincinnati State, the drone program at Butler Tech. Those are in discussion phases, but those are things we're working towards, better use of the airport facilities. We'll continue to work on deferred maintenance repairs. You've had several of them, including tonight. The runway lights are on your agenda for tonight. We will continue to work on all of that in two thousand eighteen. Go ahead, please. Community revitalization is actually decreasing. There've been some one-time costs that we'll go over. You'll notice the recreation, the twenty-five thousand is out of that budget, goes over to the ED budget and communications. Go ahead, please. We had some things in community revitalization at two thousand seventeen that simply were just one-time expenses, and that's why the budget's actually going down in community revitalization. Community center had a rooftop replacement. That's a once-every-thirty-year expenditure. That will not happen in two thousand eighteen. The recreation budget was transferred out of community revitalization. We are adding one more building inspector in two thousand eighteen. That's for a couple of reasons. Number one, they're very hard to find. Number two, our activity is up. And number three, Larry Tuttle, our chief building official, is getting towards the end of his career. And in the next two to three years, we anticipate he will be retiring, and so we need to start getting some succession planning in place. We have the staffing in place and someone that's ready to step up and be our next chief building official. So we will be adding a new building inspector in two thousand eighteen. Building for this maintenance, we have the roof, which is on tonight's budget. We rebuilt the two chillers on the roof. Those will not be, obviously, in the two thousand eighteen budget because they're over and done, so you'll see a decrease in there. And then we also, in Planning Division, had seventy-five thousand for the master plan that is being executed. You did the contract for that at the last meeting, so, again, that money will not necessarily be needed in two thousand eighteen. So that's why that budget's going down. Go ahead, please. Public Works is basically static. Go ahead, please. Two thousand eighteen goals for Public Works administration. We are, again, working on the long-term control plan. I know we're working on the consent decree that goes with that. We are going to continue to work with Troy on the new software for Public Works to track jobs. We, I talked to Scott this week about the LED street lighting project. He says the engineering is now complete. He's not seen the report back, but the work has been done. So we will probably in the next three to six months move from engineering to costing to bringing you a resolution or ordinance that allowing us to move forward with that project to convert all of the streetlights. One of the things we're going to try to incorporate in, if we can make it work, is we want to, in the downtown area, all of those old streetlights that are literally so brittle, if you hit them, they snap off. We've got the new downtown master plan with the pretty new lights without whole banners. We hope to incorporate all of that into the streetlight projects so that we get all the savings of the LED lights and at the same time replace those downtown lights that are at their useful end of life with, again, LED new versions that enhance our downtown, consistent with our downtown master plan, all in one package. We will have several hundred thousand dollars to convert those. The savings is so large that not only will we pay for the bond to do the work, we will still have savings while we're paying back the bond. That's how much money we'll save with LED. It'll be a small amount for the time we're paying back the bond, and then we'll get the whole hundreds, I mean, it's three to four hundred thousand dollars in savings when the bonds are paid off by converting to LED. Go ahead, please. Traffic and electronic maintenance. We will continue the LED conversion of our older traffic signals. We'll update new intersections. We have new traffic software that eventually will be incorporated into our transportation study. We want to move people more quickly. We can now have software, when I got here in two thousand fourteen, we were using DOS-based traffic software. We have the new software in place. We need to outfit the lights to be able to be compatible with it. And if we then get the transportation study done and know what we're trying to do to move people, we'll have the pieces in place to be ready to move forward. We'll continue with gateway enhancement as part of the Kettering Health Network project. And my guess is a lot of the seventy-five thousand that we put in last year, which is also in this year's budget, will be that area right along Dix Creek, right in front of where they are, where all that woods and drainage is. We'll work on that area. We'll probably also work on the median going down towards Union Road there and enhance that. There's money left after that. We'll start going back up one-twenty-two towards downtown, continue to work on the median's areas until we run out of money. Capital for projects. You've got local street paving, which I'll go over in a minute. The gateway enhancement, which, again, I've just talked about, traffic parks and buildings for four hundred and five thousand, the water fund, water facility upgrades. We are doing a major upgrade at the Kensington Pump Station. And we will continue to work on our GIS latest software improvements that allow us to do some pretty cool things, mapping and plotting things that we do, all the way down to where the trees are planted in the parks. We've got some very cool things that we have access to. Sewer, again, we'll work on long-term control plan and system replacement and upgrades. Stormwater, same type of deal, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Go ahead. The OPWC, which you've already approved us going in and applying for, there isn't a reason to believe we will not get that. One of the nice things about that is we've been talking for a while about South Briel. We're going to knock South Briel out next year. It'll be nice to get that done. It's probably one of our main traveled roads. That's probably the one that's in the worst shape. We will get that paved next year and put it back in play. That final section of South Main between Eighteenth and the city limits, we'll get that done, which means Main Street will be done. This year, we're working on Central, which means we'll have Central done with the exception of University to Main. Goldman, Lewis, and Marshall, and Park Lane. We also have three hundred and fifty thousand in the auto and gas tax budget for our local crews to do paving. We're still evaluating where those streets are. When I know where they are, I'll get them to you, but I'll also put them out on the blog and let everybody know what to expect, but those have not been identified yet. Go ahead, please. Remaining funds. Let's see what else has been on here. Nothing terribly exotic. The nine point one percent increase in health allows us, again, to open up through lunch and all day on Friday. That's adding another person in the health department. Nuisance abatement. We had some expenses, one-time expenses that, again, are going to go down. The sewer fund is going up, but, again, most of that's going to go in. up, but again, most of that's going to go in capital and the long-term control plan. Nothing exotic in there. Go ahead, please. So what that does is you've had the book now for a month. We're certainly available for questions. General questions, maybe tonight. More specific questions, I'll have to get the budget book out and get you the answers with Jake. You will have the first reading November seventh for the budget. You'll have the second reading November twenty-first so that the budget would take effect at the end of the year and be ready to go for January first. You'll have two pay and benefits ordinances at the next meeting, the one, old one, which covers everybody that works for the city now. You'll have a new pay and benefits ordinance that implements a new payroll plan, that again, is moving us towards sustainable revenues. You'll also have the deappropriations that I talked about, the five-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, I think it was three hundred dollars. You'll see the first reading on that. Again, laying us all in so that as we get to the end of the year, we've cleaned up this year. We're ready to move into next year, and we hope we've dealt with everything the council wanted us to do.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Atkins from council?
I have one question. On the transfer of funds from one department to the other, is that in our book, or is that?
It is in the book.
It's in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Atkins, on the, I guess my main concern is the one-point-three million in the deficit spending. The deappropriation, my understanding correctly, that that five-hundred-and-some-odd-thousand is going to be pulled forward for next year to kind of lessen that deficit spending?
Correct.
Okay. So then I guess my follow-up question is regarding the, the construction funds, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're, you know, we've been talking about that for a year or so. I don't want to pull that forward to narrow that deficit even, even more. Is that the plan, or are we still setting those aside for projects as we see fit?
They're available. Originally, we had talked about using them for east-end infrastructure. There've been a number of state programs that have come available that will pay for most of the infrastructure on the east end if there's a project available. So it gets that chicken and the egg. Do you want to go out and spend a million dollars and hope that people come, or do you want to hold that in, in reserve? And if you get a project, have the state pick up eighty to ninety percent of it. And so we've, are, we've been playing conservative and holding our cards to this point, because again, if we can get a nice project together, we'd rather have the state pay for it if it's available.
So just to be clear, that, those one-time funds are not part of what we're pulling forward?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Atkins? All right, thank you. Mr. Atkins, anything else in your city manager reports?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
For your consideration this evening, we have the approval of the city council minutes from October third, two thousand seventeen. We received and filed board and commission minutes from the historic commission of June the twenty-second and August the thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. The board of zoning appeals from July fifth, two thousand seventeen. The planning commission from July twelfth, two thousand seventeen. The architectural review board from July thirty-first and September sixth, two thousand seventeen. And the park board minutes from August the seventh, two thousand seventeen. To confirm the personnel appointments of Christopher Lichens, maintenance worker, to Public Works and Utilities Water Maintenance. And Rachel Ward and Ryan Kessler, patrol officers in Public Safety Division of Police.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions as listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right, we have three motion agenda items.
The sale of two city-owned vacant lots located at one-one-three-five Lafayette, parcel number Q six-five-two-one-zero-zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-four-four, and one-one-one-nine Lafayette, parcel number Q six-five-two-one-zero-zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-one-one-five to Woodside Cemetery for five hundred dollars each, a thousand dollars total.
Okay. Motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Atkins, any?
Yes, Your Honor. Woodside Cemetery has approached the city, and this was actually a couple of years ago, and they have an interest in extending the cemetery all the way down to Lafayette and rounding that corner and improving the look of that, the aesthetics of that area. And so we have told them we were in support of that. As these different lots become available, as houses come down, as things are available, we're going to try to assist them in grabbing those. We have these two lots, which are now ready to go. We've always sold vacant lots for five hundred dollars. So again, it would be a thousand dollars for these two lots.
Okay. Any questions for council? Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Item B, sale of city-owned vacant lot located at three-twenty Yankee Road, parcel number Q six-five-two-one-zero-two-zero-zero-zero-one-two to Christie, Lavangi, Melkey, and Richard Melkey for five hundred dollars.
Can you motion adopt?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a vacant lot located at three-twenty Yankee Road. The people that would like to buy it are the next-door neighbors. They'd like to expand their side lot. This is our custom. We would sell these for five hundred dollars. We are recommending that you approve that.
Okay. Any question for Mr. Atkins? All right, Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right, we have three motion agenda items.
The sale of two city-owned vacant lots located at one-one-three-five Lafayette, parcel number Q six-five-two-one-zero-zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-four-four, and one-one-one-nine Lafayette, parcel number Q six-five-two-one-zero-zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-one-one-five to Woodside Cemetery for five hundred dollars each, a thousand dollars total.
Okay. Motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Atkins, any?
Yes, Your Honor. Woodside Cemetery has approached the city, and this was actually a couple of years ago, and they have an interest in extending the cemetery all the way down to Lafayette and rounding that corner and improving the look of that, the aesthetics of that area. And so we have told them we were in support of that. As these different lots become available, as houses come down, as things are available, we're going to try to assist them in grabbing those. We have these two lots, which are now ready to go. We've always sold vacant lots for five hundred dollars. So again, it would be a thousand dollars for these two lots.
Okay. Any questions for council? Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Item B, sale of city-owned vacant lot located at three-twenty Yankee Road, parcel number Q six-five-two-one-zero-two-zero-zero-zero-one-two to Christie, Lavangi, Melkey, and Richard Melkey for five hundred dollars.
Can you motion adopt?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a vacant lot located at three-twenty Yankee Road. The people that would like to buy it are the next-door neighbors. They'd like to expand their side lot. This is our custom. We would sell these for five hundred dollars. We are recommending that you approve that.
Okay. Any question for Mr. Atkins? All right, Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Next up is ordinance number O twenty-seventeen dash forty-two. This is an ordinance authorizing a collective bargaining agreement with AFME Local eight-five-six dash A. This is the Transit Division for the years October first, two thousand seventeen, through September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, and declaring an emergency.
Can you motion adopt?
So moved.
Second. Okay, thank you. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. The city began negotiating with the AFME Transit Union. The parties have reached a one-year agreement that's been incorporated with a one-point-five-percent pay increase during the term of the contract. We are working with our four employees, full-time bus drivers that are in this unit. We are working on how, over the next several years, we will phase them out so that Butler County will have all of the employees that are running in our transit system. We were unable to resolve that through this negotiation, so we put together a one-year agreement while we continue to work on the longer-term answers to how we treat those four employees right, but still move towards where we need to go long-term.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-seventeen dash twenty-eight. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant and to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation. This is for a runway lighting rehabilitation project at the Middletown Regional Airport. This is a second reading and is ready for your action this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second. All right. I know we had a presentation discussion on this previously. Any other questions or comments?
The only thing I would add is there was a typo in the staff report earlier that said it was a ninety-five-five split. It's a ninety-ten split. I wanted to let you know that. The number, the dollar amount, was correct in the staff report. The city match is forty-one-thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, but the percentage was misstated. I wanted to make sure that that was made clear.
Thank you. Clarifying that. All right, we motion second. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Next up is ordinance number O2017-42. This is an ordinance authorizing a collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI Local 856-A. This is the transit division for the years October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2018, and declaring an emergency.
Can you motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. The city began negotiating with the AFSMI Transit Union. The parties have reached a one-year agreement that's been incorporated with a 1.5% pay increase during the term of the contract. We are working with, there are four employees, full-time bus drivers, that are in this unit. We are working on how, over the next several years, we will phase them out so that Butler County will have all of the employees that are running in our transit system. We were unable to resolve that through this negotiation, so we put together a one-year agreement while we continue to work on the longer-term answers, how we treat those four employees right, but still move towards where we need to go long-term.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Next is resolution number R2017-28. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant and to enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation. This is for a runway lighting rehabilitation project at the Middletown Regional Airport. This is a second reading and is ready for your action this evening.
Very good, thank you. Do we motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I know we had a presentation discussion on this previously. Any other questions or comments?
The only thing I would add is there was a typo in the staff report earlier that said it was a 95-5 split. It's a 90-10 split. I wanted to let you know that. The number, the dollar amount, was correct in the staff report. The city match is $41,595, but the percentage was misstated. I want to make sure that that was made clear.
Thanks. Clarifying that. Our motion is second. Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Resolution number R2017-29. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the 2016 Assistance to Firefighters Grant, to enter into grant agreements to obtain said grant and declaring an emergency.
Can you motion adopt?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. I had mentioned this at the last council meeting. We have been given a grant that will allow us to replace our self-contained breathing apparatus units. We will actually incorporate the receipt of the money and the expense of the money to purchase the units. It's already in the 2018 budget that you have, the big book that you have, but I need to get permission today to accept the grant, even though we won't get the money until 2018.
Very good. No questions or comments? All right, Ms. Gank, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Next is resolution number R2017-30. This is a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio. This is for the period ending December 31, 2017, and declaring an emergency. This will be in regards to the general fund.
Can you motion adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. Dr. Urso has been working with the city to renovate the baseball field at Rathman Park. As part of those duties, he has secured $10,000 in funding for the Miriam Knoll Foundation to help pay for the materials for the dugouts and some of the fencing. We have already received that check from the foundation, Community Foundation, from